All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Tuesday, October thirteenth, regular meeting of the town council. As far as the roll call is concerned, all members of council are present except Ms. Kansky and Mr. Knapp, who we expect to not to be present this evening as a result of us having a meeting on Tuesday and the holiday being yesterday. And Ms. Heim is also not present at the moment, but she did indicate that she will be arriving sometime late this evening due to work obligations, so we expect her shortly. I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. Are there any comments to the consent calendar? Changes, anything? Seeing none, I'm going to pass the consent calendar. And before we move on, we're all being overwhelmed with technology right now, which was our wish, so we got what we wished for. So you'll see in the agenda, Mr. Zamri would like to give us a quick presentation, so without further ado, Mr. Zamri.
Thank you. So yeah, a quick overview of the packets that I left out for everybody. Just so you know, that within the cabin that houses the Chromebooks, there's also the second bottom shelf that has these packets as well. So future meetings, if you need to go back and refresh, you can still get to this information. So first of all, the purchase for the projector, the Chromebooks, the video upgrades, all of that was made possible through a grant from the Cornelius Rogers grant. So it's a wonderful purchase that was made possible through the generosity of Cornelius Rogers. The Chromebooks, the nice thing about them, as soon as you open them up, they'll turn on. They have solid-state hard drives, they're really quite fast. Depending on how the last person left it, you might see some different things. So that's just something to be aware of. You go in as a guest, you'll see that connection lower left, you don't have to worry about any passwords. Once you go in as a guest, there's only one icon on the lower left after you click guest, and that's for the Chrome browser. Once you click on that, you're out onto the web, you will see a blank page. Don't worry, you have to put in an address for wherever you want to go. You type in the address for townhallmonroect.org, and then what I've given you in the directions is literally step by step how to get to the packet. All right? So I will work with you with that right now, because I did that with a few of you, but literally in your packet, it shows, you know, each step to get to the packets area. I want to thank Bob Bachman for all his work in putting all this together, he did a beautiful job. Also, Tanya, I want to thank, today we discovered that with the packets being zipped, the Chromebooks didn't like that. So this afternoon, what Tanya did is she separated all of your files for your packets, so they just come up as individual PDFs, and the Chrome browser is much happier with that. So thank you to Tanya for making that happen on such short notice. And actually, this is over and over, so it's very old in technology time, because this referred to something that's already been fixed. And lastly, if you want to open up another tab for your email, feel free to do that. Just go to webmail.monroeuct.org. If you need a password reset, just shoot me an email, and that way we'll make sure we get that done for you. That's never an issue. And just a couple others pieces. If we lose power at some point...
Can you go back to that?
I sure can, yep.
Because I want to put it in my phone, and I never did it.
Sure. Yeah, webmail.monroeuct.org, it's our website with webmail in front of it. As I was starting to say, if we lose power at some point, there might be times when it loses its reference to where the Wi-Fi is. And again, this is in the packet that I've left up top for you. The lower right-hand side is a little Wi-Fi icon, where that arrow is. Once you click on that, this summer, Wi-Fi upgrades were made to Town Hall. We have two areas for connectivity now. The preferential bandwidth goes to TH Wireless, which is password-protected. Staff all know that password, so we can hook you up with that if ever the machine loses that. The other way you can get in is TH Public, and no password is needed. So that's always available to you as another way to get in. And video recording, we met with staff today to review that and show everybody how to set things up for recording. It's really pretty simple. Once everything is on, and we've color-coded the on switches in bottoms, I actually painted them white, so they stand out. Once everything is on, where the red circle is up top, you hold those two buttons, the circle for the record first, and then the play. Once you hold those two buttons, it goes into record. After the recording's been made that night, the next day, Bob Bachman will come and pick it up, and it will get uploaded onto YouTube, and you'll see it available on the web, all categorized on the town website. So, that's a quick overview of everything. I don't know if you have any questions?
It says I can't do that because I cannot connect to the server.
Try, are you going to TH Public?
Safari, I was going to Safari.
Let me take a look in just a minute.
Okay, sure.
Question, can we set the homepage so that it's the Monroe's homepage?
We can. Right now, these are not managed devices. There was an upcharge for doing that.
Do you think it's in the future?
We could, I think in the future. I think as we, I mean, it's not, it's not a major expenditure, it's thirty bucks per machine to get them onto a managed domain. So I think...
I mean, it's not a huge endeavor to...
Right, right.
To type in the address, but...
Right, but I think as we move forward, it's something we can do. The nice thing about having a managed domain is there's a lot of things we can push out to you. Like if there's apps that we want, for example, mirroring apps, we can just push them out without you guys having to do that individually.
Right.
So I think as we move forward, we can...
And then, question we asked off the record, I just want to ask it on the record. We discussed the ability to broadcast video to all the machines, that's something we're looking into.
Right, right. We'll work on that and find a way to make that happen.
And I see, it looks like all of the town council packets are now uploaded from this year, and some for last year, I know Vito was working on that, but...
Yeah, Tanya, I believe you guys got that all done today.
Yeah, all of this year's are done today. But 2014, I still have to answer.
That's amazing.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Zamri and I are meeting next week as part of the subcommittee. So I'm sure, he's probably getting so much in his head right now, and all the great things he's about to do, so we'll just come down with a list, and I'll give a very quick report at the end of town council at the next meeting. If that's fair, then we're going to start the budget process and stuff, so.
Mr. Chair, I was going to wait until later, but does everybody on town council know that Tanya Bombero is the new, my newest administrative assistant for selectmen?
You don't need to be here.
No, she wanted to be here for a lot of different things. We have a new system. She's very integral in putting it together, so she wants to make sure it works. But I thank her for even today, for doing what she's done with Jack, because there's a lot of things she's learning, and she just took this hands on. But she was part of doing this the whole way through, so thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
And Jack, self-explanatory, but if we needed to access anything on the web as far as a resource during council, we can do that through the browser, right? It's fully functioning, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Zamri?
TH Public, no firewall, no proxy, anything, just right at the door, any whitelisting, anything like that?
There might be some whitelistings, there might be.
Okay. We'll talk about that next week, and I'll explain to council with that possibly, and so on. Okay, that's fine.
That sounds really complicated. Jack, thank you so much. I'm thrilled to see this have come to fruition. I think it's going to be a huge improvement for us and for the entire town, helping with transparency and getting our message out there, so I can't thank you and your staff enough. And Tanya, thank you for everything you've done, so I'm really excited about this.
Thank you, we're looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Good job, good job.
All right. I see we have Attorney Ryan here, and since he's a high-级 attorney, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session and invite Mr. Ryan, Mr. Bonavsky, and First Selectman Mr. Babrick to stay for that executive session. So is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, second. Second, Mr. Kellogg, all those in favor? Motion carries, one, two, three, four, five, six to zero. So if everybody wouldn't mind, if they would please, just for a short moment, exit the chambers while we're in executive session. Ms. Serrato, are we back on? All right, so we're out of executive session. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Some.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas to amend the agenda to add release agreement under new business fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kellogg, all those in favor of this amendment? Motion carries, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Ms. Serrato, let the record reflect that during executive session, Ms. Heim has arrived. All right, moving on to communications. A, memo from the First Selectman to departments, agencies, boards, and commissions dated September 30th, 2015, regarding annual report for fiscal year 2014-2015. B, memo from the Tax Elector to Town Council Chairman dated October 6th, 2015, regarding request for refunds totaling $12,390.75. C, correspondence from Newtown Director of Business to Ram Bonavsky, Director of Finance, CC to Town Council Chairman dated October 1st, 2015, Chalk Hill School Status Report for the period of July through September 2015. D, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated October 7th, 2015, regarding a bid waiver for a new boiler at Stevenson Number Two Firehouse. Memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated October 7th, 2015, regarding an appointment to the Economic Development Commission. And F, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated October 7th, 2015, regarding an appointment to the Historic District Commission. Any comments on the communications? I don't normally ask that, but I know there was a few intriguing communications, so if anybody wanted to discuss any of them, such as Chalk Hill or the memo about the report, we can discuss them. So then, we're going to move on to public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to participate? Mr. Kapoor.
Checking the room.
Checking the room.
Good evening, Nicholas Kapoor, Love and Cardinal Lane. I was at the meeting last night, Board of Ed, Town Council, Board of Finance meeting, and I think we should talk about how a lot of the updated stuff was on Google Doc. So I was on there this morning afternoon, looking around, and Jack did too good a job in that he put all of the stuff that was, all of the stuff, all the documents that were included in the study. And I saw at the bottom of the page, there was the Facilities and Demographic Assessment, Town Buildings Final Draft from Fletcher Thompson. Now, I have been to many of your meetings, and I don't know if I missed this. I don't know if you all talked about this, but the cover page has a date of January 20th, 2015 on it. This is a 500-page document I've never seen, I didn't even know it existed, to be honest with you. So if you look at the very last page, the 500th page, they do their whole report, and they break down their recommendations into five levels of priorities, priorities one through five. And they have a, they have a school part and a town part. So school part and town part, broken down by school, and then broken down by department. Okay. My question to you all is, and it's really to the First Selectmen, is why has this not been on every agenda since January? Has this ever been discussed? If you look at these numbers, we all, I feel like on the town council, everybody clambers for data, data, data. This has been here since January. If you look at the Priority One costs for town buildings only, it is $6.8 million. Of that $6.8 million, 2.4 of that is just for Town Hall. Of that 2.4, about 1.4 of that is not even to renovate and make better, it is to get things in this building up to code. This room, in and of itself, is one of the first priorities. The aisles in this room aren't fire code, aren't up to fire code, they're too narrowed. They take pictures of the stairs on either side of the council that aren't ADA accessible. They take pictures of the back of the chairs that don't have any accessibility for people who, these chairs aren't ADA compliant. If you went to, I was at the Board of Finance meeting last, a couple weeks ago, and they talked about how $4.5 million is coming off of debt service. So they thought that when they come into a meeting about capital projects, they were going to look at a number, they wanted to come in as a full board and have a full number. Well, if you look at the capital projects plan you put together that was voted upon in your budget, capital projects are at $7 million for this upcoming fiscal year, and between the schools and the town, just for Priority One costs, it is $24.5 million. These are things that Fletcher Thompson, in their 500-page report, said are of dire circumstances. And we have had this for nine months. And what has anybody done with this? And I just feel like we're beyond a capital projects committee. I think these are dire circumstances. We have things in Town Hall that are not up to code, and we're not addressing that. Again, another nine months, and we're not doing anything about it. So it's just very frustrating. I wish I knew about this sooner. But, and again, this is what 2020 was supposed to be looking at. The POCD doesn't talk about financial projections. The POCD does not talk about hiring practices. The POCD doesn't talk about capital projects. We need another type of committee, which may or may not be discussed this evening, but another type of committee that brings all the people together to discuss these things. You're not going to put $24.5 million in a budget? We can't get a budget passed now when we're putting standard of living increases on Board of Ed and Town Hall. So I'm just really disappointed, nine and a half months, and 500 pages, and what have we done? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapoor. Are there any other members of the public who wish to participate? Seeing none, I'm going to close public participation. Mr. Babrick, you indicated before I move on that you had an announcement to make?
No, just that there was a, and I just got the answer, there was an accident on Route 111 today that was shut down between Wheeler and Kennel Creek Road. And we weren't supposed to lose power, but we have lost power significantly, probably down your road and a few others. And I got to find out what that is, but I will be texting that, so I don't have to leave anymore. That's why I left the session to go, and I leave, it's because of that.
I didn't want to forget about you, so I apologize. Moving on to appointments, A, Ms. Martin.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's not you, Ms. Martin. It's Ms. Lepalas.
All right. I'm sure you have the rest of the council to it, so I can find it, let me just find it. Okay. Gary Thompson of 80, Bug Hill Road, to the Historic District Commission for a term ending July 1st, 2020.
Motion by Mr. Pelas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Heim, discussion, Mr. Pelas?
Gary has been an active member of the Historic District, has been altered for the past two years, and is enthusiastic to have the opportunity to become a full member of the commission. This appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Vita Stone.
Thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Are there any, is there any discussion for the discussion regarding this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor? And against? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Moving on to B, Barbara Farr, Mr. O'Rourke?
Barbara Farr, 233 Meadows End Road, to Economic Development Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2017.
Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, is there a second? Second by Mr. Reed, Mr. O'Rourke, discussion?
Barbara has lived in Monroe for nine years with her family. She has a BS, Business Administration, a BA, Political Science, from the University of Missouri Columbia. Barbara has prior experience in town leadership, during her academic service in Columbia's Mayor's Office, and REEDY, Regional Economic Development, Inc. Prior to moving to Monroe, she served as Commissioner in the city of Olent, Kansas. She recently retired after 20-plus years of practical business experience as HR Executive and Account, Executive with Ceridian. She has a proven track record, leveraging her strong business acumen, creativity, leadership, and ability to network effectively, and is now seeking to give back. Barbara actively promotes Monroe businesses on social media. Her passion for local business development and analytical skills will serve the town well in any capacity she seeks to volunteer. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the vendor, Haslam.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Is there any further discussion regarding this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor? And against? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Moving on to action items. A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters, Ms. Heim.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I went to the Board of Education meeting. They were at a point six position to the guidance for Bon Hallow School. They also announced that Massacre High School got the Blue Ribbon School. And in the past, two other of the schools had this school distinction. They discussed the new insurance plan for non-affiliated aided staff, and that is because the new plan, everybody has to be insured. So they offered an insurance plan for part-timers that are over a certain amount of hours because of the new federal guidelines, Portable Care Act. They got one month extension for the Suda, Sudex for the food. They had a presentation for the unaffiliated sports program. And they're also sending out surveys, going to do surveys, four surveys, one for the parents, one for the kids, one for the administration. And, those four surveys, I forgot what they were on us. And that was it for the Board of Education. The Board of Finance met. They talked about expenditures to be paid under the Capital Non-Occurring Fund. They approved for the Monroe Fire Department Emergency Generator, the emergency boiler for Stepney Fire Department, the repair of the loader, paving at the police shooting range. They were going to take it out of the, I guess they're getting $750,000, and $250,000, $250,000 will be coming out of Recurring Capital Fund. I'm sorry, that has the capital, the capital, I'm sorry. The capital fund, there is, with the surplus, $250,000, they are putting into the Recurring Fund, which I believe has to come to the Town Council for a vote. That is a note here, I have that, the Town Council has to approve that. They also talked about the turf field. I guess bids are between $1.5 million to $2 million. I guess the bids aren't completely in yet, but they talked about that. They talked about the ADPAC meeting last, that was last night. They also discussed about trying to find the funds to pave the parking lots at the firehouse stations. And they had an update on the road reconstruction. There was a brief discussion about what they're going to do with Chalk Hill. And they also talked about the EMS collection policy. That is about it right now. Everything else they put on hold for the next meeting.
Okay.
And can I defer anything to you?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything to report. I don't think either Board of Health or EMS Commission, that's what I asked me, reported that EMS, the billing thing, collection policy was reviewed by Board of Finance, and my understanding was referred back to the EMS Commission for further work. It'll eventually get to us, but still working through that.
And I think what they were asking the EMS was to check with the company that we have at, that would, to see what other towns, having municipalities been doing with these collections.
That's my understanding as well.
Thank you, Ms. Heim. Mr. Kellogg, also, I was privy to an email that you sent to the state of Connecticut regarding the STEEP grant, correct? That you did acknowledge our acceptance of that, so I think that's important to report as well. I don't think there's anything to report beyond that, but...
Yeah, I expect the First Selectman was going to provide an update in that regard, since it was on the dais. But yes, that, when we get to that, I'll...
Don't let him steal all your credit.
Happy to confirm that...
I'll give credit where credit is due.
All right, moving on to item B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works and Parks and Recreation Matters, Mr. O'Rourke?
Our subcommittee has not met since our last meeting. I thought you have some updates on Parks and Rec. Right now, they're applying for a $600,000 grant that would extend the trail to connect the Maple Drive area to Purdy Hill. The new fields construction project has been, has been with planning and zoning, and they have addressed probably nine different issues that they want to have a look at and revisit it before they proceed. I could go through them, but just basically, we have a lot of outstanding issues that need to get sorted out between Parks and Rec and Planning and Zoning before that project can move forward. DPW update, the underground tank removal program is still moving forward. I haven't gotten any further update as to what the specific status of it is, but in that regard, no news is somewhat good news, yeah.
Anything further, Mr. O'Rourke?
Ms. Kansky would have the wetlands reports, and she's not here this evening. Anything for Planning and Zoning?
Yeah, so Planning and Zoning, Chairman O'Hara did want me to mention, and it might be old news to some folks, but the Walmart appeal was won. And so they're expecting groundbreaking in 2016. So I think there's going to be quite a lot of talk about that in the next couple of months. I am catching up with the Planning and Zoning Commission on Thursday, so there'll be, there'll be quite a bit coming in next time. Mr. Zamri's Facilities and IT Department is also part of this subcommittee. I think he did a pretty good job with demonstrating the latest here. I know it's been a lot of talk up to this point, but we can obviously, the fruits of the labor have come across here. They speak for themselves.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. O'Rourke. Moving on to item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Ms. Lepalas?
We actually met tonight, and we created a Strategic Planning Committee, which shall be a special committee of the town council. And we're bringing it to the full council tonight for approval and a vote.
We didn't create it, did we?
Well, technically, we created. Okay. I said we're bringing it to council tonight.
Yes, we are.
Is there a date for the next meeting?
No, well, we have one. What do we say?
It's going to be next Tuesday.
Tuesday, 4/30.
And that's October 20th.
Thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Moving on to action item D, the Trumbull Monroe Health District. Mr. Knapp is obviously in charge of that committee. He's not present this evening, so we'll move on, since that's also essentially on our agenda, unfinished business. That leaves us with E, the First Selectman's update, Mr. Babrick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, where can I start? I can start with obviously the STEEP grant. Obviously, we want to thank the governor for giving us the $500,000 STEEP grant. As you've seen, some other towns weren't as lucky, $200,000 to $300,000. No site has been chosen yet for EMS. There are a few sites in the subcommittee that they're looking at, which is a good thing. But I want to thank JP and State Senator Kelly for really pushing this thing through. And obviously, I want to thank the work that Ken Kellogg and the rest of the Health Department, I mean, the rest of EMS facility study has done, again, once again, a team effort, and again, giving credit where credit is due. This is exactly the type of work that we need to see continued with town council and working with everybody, including the state and regional representatives, so hats off to you all. As you'll see on your, on your dais and down there, we have two flu clinics coming up with the help of Stratford. Nancy Brielle has been a tremendous asset the last couple days, putting information out there and getting things. You're going to see a lot of great things from this young lady and her, the park, her commission. I want to congratulate her for stepping in. And I left here Friday afternoon at 4:00, and she was still hammering away and trying to get us more grant opportunities and things like that. So again, a fantastic person. And last but not least, I want to tell you that a job offer has been made to a nurse. We should have that word by Thursday, but I just wanted to put it out since it was a contentious point last time that we were interviewing. We are going to have a nurse in hopefully by Thursday. And again, very happy with how the coordination has happened, so that is my report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Babrick. Moving on to unfinished business. Item A is the Monroe Local Health. To refresh everybody's memory from just two weeks ago, we had discussed removing Monroe Local Health, the meeting prior. We collectively, as a consensus, agreed that we were beyond the old and moving on to the new, and therefore was taken off the agenda, but due to the request of Ms. Martin, it was added back on to the agenda for essentially an update on the ongoing negotiations, if you will allow me to use that term, between the towns of Monroe and Trumbull with the district and settling all matters and winding up the district. I did speak with Attorney Fracassini subsequent to our meeting last time to advise him that we were looking for an update in that regard. I did add this item back to the agenda. I did, um, add this item back to the agenda. This morning, I discussed, Mr. Fracassini did anticipate coming, he had planned on coming, but there was a development, uh, that did happen today whereby, uh, there has been, uh, further negotiation ongoing between, uh, the towns, uh, and the Health District in trying to wind up the matters. So he did not feel that, um, it was appropriate to discuss this while the offer was essentially out there, um, or the negotiations were out there, uh, and it was inappropriate for executive session this evening, but I did ask him to provide me with a memorandum that, uh, he did provide that I'm going to read into the record, uh, this evening, and hopefully it will enlighten the council as to where, uh, things stand with the Monroe, Trumbull-Monroe Health District. So I did get this, uh, late today, which is why, prompted me to ask Mr. Zamore before, off the record, how we could get these, um, these documents, these memorandums, this type of information uploaded to the Chromebooks that we have before us, so hopefully we're gonna find a solution for that, because if I had that, uh, that ability, uh, then I would've done that so we could read along, um, rather than make physical copies. So hopefully in the future we'll be able to do that, so if you'll indulge me for a moment, uh, I will read the memorandum. It's entitled Memorandum Regarding the Trumbull-Monroe Health District. October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. Dear Mr. Lido, you had requested my presence at the town council meeting tonight in Monroe in regards to the Trumbull-Monroe Health District. Subsequent to that request, a meeting was held with representatives from Trumbull-Monroe Health District, including Raymond Knapp from Monroe, as well as Attorney Brian Smith of Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford, who represents the Trumbull-Monroe Health District. That meeting occurred last week at the office of Attorney Dennis Kokinos, who is chief legal counsel for the town of Trumbull. Information was exchanged between the parties, and based on that information, a proposal is being put together to submit to Attorney Smith and his client in order to try and resolve all of the issues still pending between the towns and the Trumbull-Monroe Health District. I would hope that proposal will be submitted to Attorney Smith before the end of this week, and due to the fact that it would be my request of the town council and yourself as its chairman, that I come before the town council at its next meeting on November ninth, two thousand fifteen, to report back to the council on what has occurred up to that date. It is my understanding that you've been requested to get an outline of what has occurred since the fall of two thousand fourteen, when the town of Trumbull, in October of two thousand fourteen, pursuant to section nineteen A dash two forty-six of the Connecticut General Statute, initiated the procedures for withdrawing from the Health District. The town council of Trumbull, on December eleventh, two thousand fourteen, approved the withdrawal pursuant to the provisions of the aforementioned statute. The requirements of section nineteen A dash two forty-six state that a withdrawing municipality must have, must have been a member of the district for at least twenty-four months, and that each municipality which is a member of the district must give at least six months' notice of their intent to withdraw. Both towns complied with these requirements. Therefore, in order for either town to have withdrawn effectively by July first of the following calendar year, they must have filed or voted on its intention to withdraw from the district by December thirty-first of that previous year. I therefore came to the Monroe County Council on December twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, and had provided my opinion in regards to the legal position and the exposure that the town of Monroe had if it continued to remain a member of the district. The town council at that meeting on December twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, voted its approval to withdraw from the Trumbull-Monroe Health District effective as of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Both towns then initiated repeated requests to obtain financial documentation and other information in regards to the Trumbull-Monroe Health District, its financial status, and the status of its employees. We were finally able to get the financial information from the district, which led both towns to agree that as of the end of April and the beginning of May of this year, the Trumbull-Monroe Health District had sufficient funds on hand to pay all of its obligations through the end of June, two thousand fifteen, without the need for the fourth quarter payments from either town. We continued negotiations, and contact was kept between the town attorneys for both Monroe and Trumbull, as well as Attorney Smith, whose law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole had been retained by the Trumbull-Monroe Health District in February of two thousand fifteen. Three major obligations were presented to us by the Trumbull-Monroe Health District they indicated that they felt they were responsible for. These obligations were as follows. Number one, a loan with TD Bank. Number two, an employment agreement with its then-director, Patrice Sulig. And number three, the lease agreement with the landlord for the occupancy of the premises located at Two Corporate Drive in Trumbull, Connecticut. I will go over in more detail the town's position in regards to those three issues at the meeting on November ninth, two thousand fifteen. One of the other issues dealt with was the possible unemployment compensation liability on behalf of both towns and the employees of the Health District. Various proposals were exchanged in regards to this issue. I must note at this time that almost four months past the effective date of the district going out of existence on June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, no unemployment liability claims have been made by any of the former members, I'm sorry, employees of the district. The towns and the district and their legal representatives met at the property at Two Corporate Drive in Trumbull on June thirtieth in regards to putting together a list of items of personal property and splitting various items of personal property between the two municipalities. The district is the owner of three motor vehicles, which also have been the subject of negotiation between the towns and the district. Those motor vehicles are presently, I believe, in the first-floor garage of the building located at Two Corporate Drive, and Raymond Knapp, who was the chairman of the Trumbull-Monroe Health District, Board of Directors, has represented to us that he is in possession of the keys to the vehicles, as well as the titles. The district went out of existence on July first, two thousand fifteen. Both towns have set up their individual health departments since that date. We requested for a number of months after the effective date of the district going out of existence that the district would provide us with final financial information, including all depository and our bank statements with TD Bank or any other banking institution, and a payoff letter from TD Bank on the existing loan that the district had with that bank. We were finally able to get the information that we had been asking for since July first. I would expect, based on the information that we now have, that a proposal to settle all the issues involving the two municipalities and the district will be submitted to the district by the end of this week. As my intention to submit to the council, hopefully upon a successful, successful resolution of the claims between the parties, this proposal and a discussion of all the legal issues, what has occurred over the past year. I do not feel comfortable discussing this with the council until the last proposal has been submitted, and hopefully an agreement has been reached with the district. Any resolution of the issues between the towns and the former Monroe-Trumbull Health District would also include general leases between the towns and the district, the landlord, and the former employees of the district. Respectfully submitted, John P. Fracassini. So that was a very in-depth, um, memo from Attorney Fracassini. Uh, I will, uh, field any questions that I possibly can answer, not Attorney Fracassini, but, uh, I do have some...
Can we get copies of that with them?
I will, I would be happy to, uh, provide it to Ms. Bombaro, so she can upload it into our new, our new system. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'm gonna keep Monroe Local Health, obviously, on the agenda, and as per Attorney Fracassini's memorandum, we expect that he'll be present at our November ninth meeting. Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the chair for the update and the information that you seem to be able to receive in, in quite good detail for us, at least to fill in some few blanks of questions that have been asked for months, and one phone call, we've got some good information to go on there. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, anything further? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Um, we have item A, Strategic Planning Committee. Before we move forward on that, I'm gonna pass down essentially what the mission of the Strategic Planning Committee is. While I'm doing that, I'm gonna ask Ms. Lepellos for a motion, so it's appropriate for discussion.
A motion to approve of the establishment of the Strategic Planning Committee, which shall be a special committee of the town council.
Motion by Ms. Lepellos, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kellogg. Discussion, I've handed out a, a document that's entitled Strategic Planning Committee. This document was discussed this evening in LNA. Uh, there was one member of the public present, Mr. Kapoor, who is also in possession of one of these valuable copies. Um, essentially, what I will do is, uh, the council has it, but I'll read it for the record since our meetings are now televised, and, uh, we do have some individuals in the audience. Uh, if I had an extra copy, uh, Mr. Haas, I'd provide you one if there is one. Mr. Vavreck can give you a copy if you'd like one. So the document's entitled Strategic Planning Committee. The establishment, the Monroe Town Council is authorized by its Rules of Procedure, section twelve hereby creates the Strategic Planning Committee, which shall be a special committee of the town council. The mission, the Strategic Planning Committee shall, in collaboration, communication, and coordination with elected and appointed boards and commissions, the first selectmen, department heads, and program managers, identify and prioritize the town's short-term and long-term goals and objectives in consideration of its resources. The committee shall encourage and solicit input from town residents, taxpayers, and where required, and fiscally feasible consultants and experts. Membership, the town council Strategic Planning Committee shall be comprised, comprised as follows, not compromised. Three council members appointed by the town council chair with minority party representation and subject to majority vote at a duly constituted meeting of the council. That language is specifically in, taken right out of our Rules of Procedure, which requires that, uh, procedure. Um, at the outset, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Kellogg, who helped draft, um, this, uh, mission statement. Uh, it's something that, um, he and I have been discussing for more than six months now. Um, we had discussed, uh, just in passing, uh, in response to many, uh, agenda items that were before council, many issues that we thought, a way that we could address, um, a lot of these issues and, and be out ahead of these issues at the forefront of the planning aspect, um, with regards to our body, not relying on department heads, not relying on, with all due respect, the first selectmen or other boards and commissions. Um, I think it's imperative as elected officials that, um, we're essentially charged with being the pulse of the town. I've heard it many times, uh, and I think it's important that we have, uh, some foresight and some vision with this committee. Um, as you noticed, uh, it's, uh, the description, the mission is, is vague and intentionally so, um, so that we can, um, conform this to, uh, whatever it is that we see appropriate for short-term and long-term planning. Um, I think that, um, certainly there are some issues, um, that are omnipresent that would require, um, planning, but there are also issues such as, um, Chalk Hill, our EMS facility, um, the issues that were mentioned this evening regarding the fire departments and their, their capital needs, and even, um, the issue that was presented by Mr. Kapoor this evening. So all of those would be appropriate, um, for discussion in this committee. And my vision is that, uh, this committee is merely an investigative, uh, and investigative arm of town council. Um, it, it will, its job will be essentially to, obviously, establish planning objectives and goals, but, um, conduct research and be, um, a right arm of this body so that we can discuss, uh, the issues as a full council. I, I don't, I don't want the committee to, uh, um, make decisions by any means for the council. I want them to conduct as much investigation and make recommendations as they see fit, uh, in a bipartisan fashion, but I anticipate moving forward that we'll have much discussion, uh, as the committee conducts its investigation moving forward. Um, I know this is not something that's been before us for a long period of time, so I'm open to any questions. I will report that LNA did discuss it, there were some very good questions this evening. LNA did endorse it unanimously for consideration by council. Um, the way I'd like to, uh, proceed, just so you all are aware, is I want to name the members this evening as part of this motion. Um, what I would like to do is ask, um, who would be interested in serving, uh, on this, um, committee. Again, it would be three members, um, and, um, while we're discussing this, I'd like to make my recommendations. Uh, I will point out that the, um, as with all of our committees, um, the town council chairman is an ex officio member of all the committees, um, has a tie-breaking vote, which we don't really have that problem with three-member, um, committees, but there could be two members, and therefore it could be a tie-breaking vote. Um, so I would take that in consideration with appointments as well. So I'll now be quiet and, uh, answer any questions of the council members before the selectmen. Any other, any questions? No, Mr. Vavreck?
Ms. Martin, did her end up?
She did, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I would just, we did discuss this within LNA, but perhaps good to put in front of the council your, your thoughts on a three-member, why three members?
Um, why three members? Um, essentially, the reason for three members was as follows. I mentioned, um, we had originally considered making the chairman a part of, uh, an official member, which, which would have made four members. Um, I just answered that, that since he's ex officio, he or she would be ex officio, there's no need to do that. Um, I also think that, um, as with our other committees, uh, three members make it very easy for the subcommittee to maneuver in making meetings that are, uh, essentially liable for all of the members, and a lot of those meetings, as most of you know, do take place, uh, during the day or immediately after the workday, at hours that are not so late like this town council meeting is. And the reason for that is when you're, um, and especially with this committee, uh, being an investigative arm, uh, an information gathering arm, um, a lot of the meetings probably will have to take place during hours that town hall is open and available so that we can invite other members of, uh, departments to, and other planning committees to be, to meet with us. Um, I also am hopeful that, as per the mission, that this committee communicates with other boards and commissions, which I think is a real problem, uh, that we have here in town. While our subcommittees do serve as liaisons to the other various elected and appointed boards, um, they're not generally charged with planning. They're generally charged with reporting back to us on what takes place. So I think this is also going to be helpful with, uh, in that regard, and I, and I do think it may change some of the communication with the liaisons and their respective boards. I'm also hopeful that, um, uh, we have a lot of input, uh, and, and I'm hoping, to be quite honest with everybody, I'm hoping that the Board of Finance and the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission would, uh, explore instituting similar committees as this so that we could all coordinate, uh, our committees coordinate with planning moving forward, but we do anticipate having a number of joint meetings, uh, or at least input from all of those various boards and commissions moving forward. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellogg?
I just wanted to, uh, echo your comments and, uh, state that I, you know, I emphatically support this concept. I think, uh, there's certainly, uh, a plethora of issues that come before us that have many moving parts. They transcend multiple boards, commissions, and I think, um, it's incumbent upon this body to have as much information as possible from all those, uh, all those stakeholders and, uh, subject matter experts so that we're making well-informed decisions and, and have the right, uh, the right mindset as we set the vision for the town. So I think, um, this goes a long way to foster that collaboration and coordination, um, not just among, like, you know, town officials, department heads, but also, as noted, um, input from, from our constituents, uh, in town as well, to understand what, what we want Monroe to be going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further comments, discussion? Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit on appointing members this evening only because it's probably inappropriate to do so without Ms. Kansky and Mr. Knapp here having heard about this, and to even know whether they're interested, that may be somewhat inappropriate, so, uh, I was intending to, as I told Ms. Martin in LNA, she, she asked me when would we like to get started, uh, with this committee, and my answer was eight AM tomorrow morning, um, which, I was somewhat jesting, but not really. Um, we have a lot of work to do, so I really wanna get this, um, moving forward, but it would probably be inappropriate to do so without Ms. Kansky and Mr. Knapp having some knowledge of this and the ability to put their hat in the ring, so I will...
So you know the next meeting will be till the ninth?
I do.
Which is after the voting, et cetera?
I do.
Okay.
I do. Um, any further discussion? I mean, I, I mean, maybe I should get a consensus of the members, is it, would, um, would everybody rather, uh, again, I think it's, it's important that we move forward with this committee. Uh, I realize there's two members not here, but I'd like to hear a consensus on whether we'd like to, uh, identify who is, um, willing to serve and to put this board, uh, this committee in place this evening so that it can start working now, or, uh, do you think it's more appropriate to wait and just take the pulse of council?
I think you should do it. If, if, if what you're saying is correct, and I firmly believe it is, I think we should do it, if we're gonna get started, quotes, tomorrow or the next day.
All right. Anybody else?
I think we're all absolutely interested, uh, but I, I...
Okay.
It would be nice if, if Mr. Knapp and Ms. Kansky heard this.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Kellogg?
I think if we have, you know, some pretty interested parties tonight, I think it would be prudent to move, uh, to move forward if possible.
The one thing I, the one thing I will mention...
Time being of the essence, that's the only...
The one thing I will mention is, um, something else that was discussed in LNA is, is movement on the committees, and of course, with an election coming up, traditionally, council is met, and traditionally, we have, uh, call it juggled our members around, either by, by their wish or by other mandate, uh, just to have them, you know, fill in appropriately, so that is also something that's always available. Mr. O'Rourke?
Uh, with regards to the importance of the subject matter, um, I would suggest that we wait for a full, uh, council present.
Okay.
You know, you really only have one member missing because, uh, Mr. Knapp is going off to council, and Mr. Kapoor is coming on. He's sitting right there, and he was part of the meeting.
Why don't we, why don't we ask... Why don't we, why don't we ask, uh, let's judge the interest, Mr. Kellogg. Would you be interested in serving?
I would.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Yes.
Miss I?
I'm going off.
Okay. Um, I spoke about myself. I would be interested in serving at, uh, at some point if I was not chair. I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to be appointed to this, but I would be interested, obviously.
I'd be interested.
Ms. Martin?
I, I think at this point, I'm your minority representation you're looking at.
Okay.
And I'm extremely interested, yeah.
The expectation is that this committee meets at a minimum once per month. Just, no one's asked that question, but, uh, I think it's important. Um, obviously, at certain times, um, it's probably going to have to meet much more than that, but I think as a three-member body, um, it would be, um, appropriate to, uh, you know, meet, uh, at your leisure for short and long periods of time. All right, um, all right, so this is what we're gonna do. I think it is urgent. Um, I'm going to, um, appoint three members. I'm gonna, uh, appoint, uh, and again, this is all subject to our vote, but I'm gonna appoint Ms. Martin, um, Mr. Kellogg, uh, and, uh, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Reed also serve on this. Um, and, uh, that would be the three members that I would ask to, uh, be appointed to this, uh, Strategic Planning Committee. With, with that being said, um, I'd ask that, um, I'd like to amend the motion, so Ms., Ms. Lepellos, if you withdraw the motion, um, and then, um, restate the motion with those members, so that we can have a vote.
So I'm going to, um, resend the motion, and then you want me to put the three members in?
Yes.
Okay, uh, make a motion to approve the establishment of the Strategic Planning Committee, which shall be a special committee of the, uh, Town Council, with the membership consisting of Mrs. Martin, Mr. Reed, and Mr. Kellogg.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reed. Only discussion regarding the motion as it's currently situated. None? All those, all those in favor? And against? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you for that. Thinking out loud discussion, I appreciate that. Um, moving forward, uh, we added, uh, we amended the agenda to add the release agreement, uh, so is there a motion, Ms. Lepellos?
A motion, uh, I make a motion to approve the release agreement that we discussed tonight in executive session, and authorize the first selectman to approve, adopt, and execute on behalf of the Town of Monroe.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Ms. Lepellos. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Kellogg. Um, again, we discussed, um, a, an agreement, a release agreement in executive session, so it's not appropriate for further discussion, uh, but just a vote. So all those in favor? And against? Motion carries seven to zero. There's no further new business. Moving on to second, public participation. Are there any members in the public who wish to participate in this second session? All right, seeing none, I'll close second, public participation. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Knapp is not here.
So...
We don't know what to do.
Motion by Ms. Lepellos, second. Second and assigned, all those in favor. Motion carries seven to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Don't forget to put your toys away.
Yeah.
So it'll just, it'll just go off with closing?
Uh, Mr. Zamory, will it go off if we close it?
What's that?
Jack, it just goes off with closing? But you want us to charge him every time?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good... Because the other, uh, planning and zoning...